I'm going to call this, call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brandon.
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then, the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor/chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Present.
Present.
You wish there was flag press? So, so moved. He's afraid.
Yes. Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Yep.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, state champion. Very much for. In swing. And. Council's image is one of these images, one of the things that. We want to thank you for. Be for that good image.
One of you has a speech, when you have to do a speech, just, just flip a coin? Okay, never mind. Yeah, that's good.
Next is the wrestling team. Individual state champion. Please introduce yourself. Thank you very much for all of your hard work in the classroom and I don't know what they call it, on the mat? Is that what they say? All right, I know that. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Where's Thorpe? Good job. Yeah, they deserve that.
State champions cheer team. Introduce yourself, please. Thank you very, very much for all you've done. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Introduce yourself, please. Thank you very much for all your work. And this is your second time, right? You do sports? Wow, a busy lady. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Girls' basketball team. So, we want you to know, you want the audience to know that you were the first time in playoffs in 30 years, right? Congratulations, please. Well, congratulations, ladies. Good job. I'd like to take a five-minute recess so that we can, the council can congratulate these young people in person. And there's also goodies for you. And once we've done that, you may all go back home to study.
Or stay. All right. I'm surprised.
Sorry? We'll need to grab the consent agenda. We didn't do that yet, so come back to it. I thought we did. You did our motion for the absentee? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, now it's empty again.
Diana, does it go down it to check them off?
I need a motion to. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Julie, roll call, please.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Mr. Adams, did you wish to speak to us tonight? Address and all of that.
Yeah.
Vince Adams, 809 Mountain View Road, Sweet Home. I have three subjects. I'll try and be as brief as possible. The first subject is speed in town, mainly in the residential areas. But. It's of our opinion and observations that we're not getting any control of speed on a lot of our residential streets. Long Street's a bad one. Elm Street's a bad one. Seventh is a bad one. Mountain View is really bad on any given day of the week. I had the opportunity to be off here for about three, four weeks, about a month and a half ago. So I was able to make some observations at the Oak Heights school area during school release time. That can be a nightmare, both speeding and with parking issues and things like that that are going on up there. I do believe that that needs to be observed, a little more in depth. I did observe one almost altercation during that timeframe at Oak Heights between a couple of folks. No excuse for it, but I think that some presence up there during those timeframes at any of the schools, as a matter of fact, would be a good thing. But the speed is the biggest thing. The second item up is. My wife cornered a couple of city workers today going up Jefferson. We own part of Jefferson and it's a private drive. They'd been called by somebody because of potholes. We don't care. Reason we don't care is because it keeps the speed down. The reason those potholes are there is because people speeding up and down. And I'm working on a plan to control that even a little tighter. It is a private drive. I own the first part of it, entry off of Mountain View, and then my neighbor owns the next section that goes back. I think the city does have a little bit of that street back in there in the middle of it somewhere. What I've been told, don't know for sure. But we don't want the city in there fixing potholes. Potholes keep people slowed down. My third item up for bid is a good thing. So, and Chief might be familiar with some of this too. My wife, Nancy, does dog recovery and searches. She's been doing it for several years now. She's really good at it. She has a lot of time, a lot of patience. She has a really good knack, really good techniques. She does get a little help from friends. Sometimes she yards me out if I'm in the mood, or if I think there's a security issue, I'll go with her, depending on the location. She's been all over the area. She's been up to Mount Hood a time or two. They recovered a dog up there. She's been up to Clear Lake. Took them a while to recover a dog up there. A lot of dogs right here in the Sweet Home community. She's been over to the coast once or twice at, at her own cost. She doesn't do it for the money. She doesn't do it for anything other than she believes her babies should be cared for. When they get loose, they should be brought back to their homes. And in some of the cases, these dogs are abandoned or dumped. Recently, there's been several. We actually have two right now. One, we fostered over to a neighbor's or a friend's house. The other one, we still have at our house. The one is, the one that escaped from you guys the other day, and she was able, with the neighbor's help, to recapture that dog. So, the reason I'm giving you this little bit of a history is she doesn't get any money for it. A lot of times she'll turn down money when, you know, somebody will offer her some money for getting their dog back. She'll turn it down. If she does accept it, I've told her she needs to reinvest it into better gear. Her and Rita, a friend of ours that is, helps her sometimes, they just invested in a $400 trap. She rolled some money over that she received into that trap. That's to help her feel a little more efficient in capturing the larger animals, the larger dogs that get out. She has stuff for the smaller dogs, but the big dogs that get out, it's hard to capture them if you don't have the right kind of trap. What I'm looking for maybe, and please don't let her know I came down here and said this. She'll put a pillow over my head tonight or something. But anyway, some kind of recognition for her, for what she's doing for the community. She, you know, she, she spends a lot of, there's a lot of time that goes into this. She invests some of her money in, in some of the things that she needs to entice the animals to come into those traps. She talks to the owners when she's able to and coaches the owners in how to help themselves in the process of recapturing their dogs. These dogs can be escape artists, or it's just an accident the dog got loose. Sometimes they're car accident victims. She's gotten several that were involved in car accidents. And after the accident, the dog takes off because they're scared and it takes days and sometimes weeks to get them back. So I'm just throwing it out there. I would like to see maybe something, you guys could spitball, come up with something to kind of recognize what she does for this community and the people that own their food babies that get loose. I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Old Business. Information only wastewater treatment improvement project update. I suppose Greg, that's you.
That is me. So in front of you, before we get started, we have a presentation for you. We kind of talked about some numbers last week in our budget committee, and I heard some gaps. And I, I think we have a good presentation that can show exactly where we've been and where we're going and kind of get you guys up to speed. Also, I provided an article that one of our staff members had located, and I just wanted you to know that 40 years ago, we were having the same discussion on how to deal with our wastewater for not just our community, but for businesses. And I just found it was interesting that this has been going on for quite some time and still at that same point. Also, we, as staff, we made some phone calls to others that are projects and kind of in the similar dire straits that we are. And I just want to share some examples before we get into this presentation. Prineville, we spoke to them. They have a smaller project that's going to be headworks, sodium hypochlorite disinfection. That project went from 1.5 million to 3.5 million. And that was a small project. They would probably think. Pine has, they're probably about a month and a half in front of us. Is it not working? Okay. La Pine, they're probably about a month and a half in front of us. And I spoke with them today. If you look, they have a dual project, which is a wastewater improvement project, and they're also have a water improvement project that is attached to it. Initially, that project was estimated at 24.6 million. It's now 40 million. The wastewater portion of it alone was projected 17 million. It's now at 32 million. I talked to the Public Works Director with the City of Sandy today. They are in the process of specking out and planning a new, what they call MBR, micro biological reactor. That project was estimated several years ago, about the time we got started, 18 million. It's now 56 million. Redmond. Same thing. They had a large wastewater project that they're still working on in their facility plan. A few years ago, it was estimated at 30.1 million. Right now, prior to mobilization, it's 57.2. With that, we have Preston here. We want to kind of go through the project and what we've done and where we're at. And please, if you have any questions, I know we're going to be talking about a lot of things. Please, please ask. And we'll kind of go from there. And I think after that, we have next, because there's a contract amendment that we'll need to talk about. And I think there's some slides in this presentation that will help explain some of that. So. Preston?
So, I'm going to start back last summer when we reviewed the previous design that was taken to, I'll put it in quotes, 90% design, which is supposed to be pretty close to ready to bid. We then in the fall started in to try to carry that design to final, and that's when things got a little complicated for us. So try to walk through that story. Interrupt me if I'm, if I'm not doing a good enough job. That's it. That's a real personal problem. Um, okay. Okay, so, so I can just say Brandon? Okay, so July, so earlier in summer, last summer, Greg called me up. We had not had a ton of involvement for asset. Detail review of the 90% design. Didn't really know what we were getting into at that point, but we put a team together. We had a team that was designing. Greg talked about, we're designing the upgrades. They're under construction right now on that existing plant. Which, for some of the same job, that was a three all project that went to $10 million product, $10 million over the last eight or nine months. So similar challenges. We brought that design team because we were ready to go and we just looked at drawings and specs and just did our analysis. It was a two-week review. It was not comprehensive. We did everything we could with the time we had in two weeks, and we wrote up a summary. Shared that summary with the city. There was an estimate of the design completion by all the various disciplines that it was somewhere in the 60 to 80% complete range. As we got into the design later, we, we would figure that it's, it's probably on the low or even below the low end of that range in terms of completion based on what we saw. There was some concerns on the biological process design that, that little bit of lack of understanding of the process volumes, the clarifiers, the big tanks that we have to build out of concrete. Didn't feel like for the investment that there was enough process volume. The hydraulics in the plant were suspect at the downstream end, especially pipe sizes. Site design was not well-developed and did a lot of work. The SCADA controls, the things that we do when we're away from the plant, and we want to dial in and see how things are working and not get alarmed out in the middle of the night was just non-existent in the design. It just wasn't there at a conceptual level at best. And then there was just the, the underlying way that we do the design, the computer aided drafting was, was really complex, difficult for us to figure out how to, like, get in and carry a design forward. It was actually too many tools. 3D, there was different levels of completion, depending on where you're at in the project. It was just really, it was a complex story. So shortly thereafter, the city approached us to, to complete the design. We put together, we took our team, kept a couple of the consultants that were working on the project. The architect and the MEP sub, the HVAC and plumbing sub, and put a contract together that was signed in September with the intent that we would take that design and we would finish the details and just carry it forward to bid in fairly quick order. When we got into that design, we had to validate what we saw and kind of further explore some of the concerns that we had that we didn't have enough time to, to really understand. And there's really two things that, that really hit us pretty hard in that first, I guess, it was probably the first month, maybe three weeks. Number one, we, we spent a ton of time poring over the process design, and there were some pretty significant issues with that with just the design of the facility and how it was laid out. And that we really felt the only thing you could do, spending the amount of money you're going to spend, is we needed more process capacity, more, more volume. So that's the addition, what we call primary and secondary clarifiers. I'll explain what those are when we get there. And that another aeration basin, which is the thing in the middle between the clarifiers where we grow the bugs and cultivate the bugs, was needed. That was early in the time when we were seeing inflationary factors become an issue in the marketplace. So we didn't have enough budget to commission an entire. So we didn't have enough budget to commission an entire um in the engineer's estimate for the entire facility. But we, I was worried about the administration building and maybe just, it was just a little bit too much. And so we commissioned just a separate firm that does cost estimating every day, that's all they do. So they have all of the latest market knowledge and unit pricing and everything that they can pull in. That we don't necessarily have at that level, they, they know the cost of a sink and they can give you that cost and they can stick it in the spray sheet. So we commissioned that um, that estimate. And the building that was estimated at one point five million marked up came in really close to three million. Um and, and so in my mind, in that moment, I'm thinking, oh gosh, if we're, the cost now. You know, you have got a twenty five million dollar project that's fifty, but we're undeveloped, so there's another twenty percent on top. So I'm thinking sixty, I don't know what the number is, but I'm, it's like, I don't know what to do. We know we need more tankage, we know we need more concrete and we know we got too much projects to build. Um so we talked to the city, we talked to Greg and team and we pivoted and we said, let's go back and let's try to figure out where we can right size this thing. What can we take out? We know the costs are going to go up, but maybe if we can cut out enough of the extra stuff, and I'll explain what that extra stuff was and what we did. Um we can get this, we can at least keep this project in a place where it's a portal. I don't know what that number is, but let's try to get that number down, keep it down as low as we can. Had no idea what was going to happen with some of the things that I'll talk about coming up next. But in that moment, everything we did was, okay, let's go back. Let's figure out what we got to build and then we'll sort out, is there anything in the design that we can use? Knowing that that's a pretty small percentage of overall, when you look at a project of this size. If we lose a little bit of engineering, it sucks, it's not great, but it's certainly better than building up an entire facility that you're like, oh gosh, this.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um so President, if, if we're going to, we're going to cut this thing uh down. What is the impact going to be for these, are we going to get stuff that are not to the level we want to be or need to be? Or is it, is it going to be
That's
bubble going together, you know?
That's the, the best question you could ask, Councilor Trask, let me try to, let me try to answer it.
Okay.
Slides, I'm gonna, I, I think I'm going to get there, I'm going to do my best. So, so I want you to not pay attention so much to the green, the green is, is new tanks. That's the, that's the things, the process volume that So this is the design that we were handed to review. What I want you to focus on is all the red, so the red is the buildings or structures or things that require us to have HVAC or access. It's a structure that you go in, there can be processed equipment in there, but we're building buildings and buildings cost a lot more than just building basins. Because there's all the other stuff, we have to put roofs on it, we have to heat them, we have to cool them. Um uh we have to have doorways, we have to have access. So uh what, what, when we took this kind of step back, what you see is a whole lot of red and not as much green as you would like. There's other existing tanks that are not green um that we're reusing, and so that's consistent between the next two slides. So just bear with me as I try to explain our thought process. Um there's a different way to skin this cat than the way this uh design unfolded. Um and so what we tried to, to early on, we're like, okay, we gotta add or primary clarifiers, we need another erosion basin, maybe that's six or seven million dollars for these additional structures. We get that out of somewhere else, is there another project, let's go take these buildings. Can we do, can we do things differently? So let me give you an example, does this pointer work, Brandon? Yeah, okay. This building right here is actually a pump building that has the pumps to take the under drains and other things from these two clarifiers. So the clarifiers, that's the place where we settle out the stuff, right? So we pump the solids out the bottom, clean water overflows, and that's what eventually goes through disinfection out to the river. That can be done with what we call submersible pump station. So we just have a big hole in the ground and we put pumps down in it, and that's what most of our pump stations are, they're submersible pump station. And so what we tried to do was say, okay, that building's pretty expensive, I can build a eight, ten foot hole, drop some pumps in there. That's going to be quite a bit less expensive than building four walls, you know, a couple hundred feet of square footage of, of enclosed space. With expensive hatches, because you have to be able to pull pumps out of hatches, things like that. So we went through the design with that kind of level of thinking. We get rid of some of these concrete structures and just because we knew we had to repurpose them to build the process volume that we needed. Okay, so this is kind of what we tried to do is, is, you know, what can we use? Can, what can we reuse in the existing design? Can we take it over? Can we stick it in this design? Can we just make some tweaks to it? Maybe we need to change some dimensions, we were trying to use that, the CAD files were a real roadblock for us. We had four different buildings that were all CMU, fairly nice buildings. Um that we consolidated into a single building, I'm going to show you what that looks like. And it's the, about the cheapest construction we can do inside a facility like this, so it's a pre-engineered metal building, so it's literally just steel columns. Um we did look at, we, we knew the fundamental requirement was we had to get you the process volume we needed. Because we're not, if, if we're not going to do that, we may as well just not do the project, we're going to get you where you need to be. That, I have your question, Councilor Trask is, we gotta do that, number one. Forget everything else, if we don't give you the process volume, we're building the project. So um so that was just a fundamental thing that we wanted to do. Um we also felt there were opportunities to simplify things to a point that we could improve operations without driving us up even more there. By going to submersible pumps, those types of things, that's from outside. You don't need to go inside of buildings and figure out how to get equipment out of building up, you know, complex operations. Um we simplified the number of structures on the solid side of the plant, the number of digesters. Um it, it tried to make things larger where we could, easier to Um and then we had this, and, and the really, the thing that's been driving us from A1, you're going back to, to last September when we started, is we know we've got this seven million dollars. That's not extended, but gotta be, and that's just not an option. So we broke the project into, describe those phases and I'll, I'll, I'll describe where we're at in the process. Um so first, updating these four buildings, so they're, they're um So these this building, this building, so these are two buildings, that building and that building, those four buildings, all CMU, very nice buildings. This had a nice cover over the top, this is what we call the de-watering area. This is the headworks, which is the first thing you go to after you pump through the inflow pump station. What we saw really on it was, oh, gosh. CMU's a little more expensive, steel at the time wasn't expensive as steel is right now. I don't know what the cost comparison would be right now, but the easiest way for us to simplify that portion of the construction on the upper plant site, which there's nothing up there, so it's really easy construction, we demo some buildings and we just go build stuff. We don't impact the plant whatsoever. Um so we can consolidate those footprints less, it's less square footage, it's just as functional, I think. More functional. Um it has the operations center that the city needs to be able to have facilities around the plant and do administrative tasks. It's got the maintenance area that's needed. Um and this, uh we call this building A because but uh we have an admin side and then we have a process side. So this is the headworks, which was in the previous structure, was kind of sitting over where these primaries are. And this is de-watering, so this is the last step for the solids that come off the back end of the plant, which is down there. Um this is one of the big pieces of process volume uh that we added. The one thing that I would say, if you take a step back, um do you see all the green? So the green is just, oh, that's mostly just open water, so that's, we knew we had to get the process volume. So we just added the concrete wherever we could and made it green. So filters are not, there's, there's not a covered area, the filters, they're all just, you flow through the filters on the back end. Digestor, we're building inside the existing digestors, so we're not going to have to work on rock excavation. This is a very small tank, this is a very small tank, so we're not building two big digestors, we're building or two medium sized digestors. We're building one big one and we don't have rock excavation down there because it's in an existing tank. Um we economized the design of the inflow pump station. Repurposed the existing pump, pump station instead of making it a big and effective manhole. We added a single big secondary clarifier, that's like the ocean, it'll last forever. Steven may never have to use another clarifier. And we have uh demolished and abandoned the two small ones, which were always marginal to begin with, and they're kind of old and it was tough to use them in the design anyway. So really economize the lower end of the plant and tried to maximize what we could do, especially down in the future, and I'm going to get to that in a minute. Um this is that new erosion basin. The new primary clarifiers, it was one small round hole that was just not big enough. We have three now, and that is, that's going to be the, probably the biggest investment that we can make is um it makes everything else work downstream when you have a good set of primaries upstream in a plant like this. Um and then this building up here at the very end, that's actually the new service entrance and where the blowers that feed these erosion basins will be. This is all the salt side of the plant, much more simplified. Just every solid stream is going to come down to this tank, we're going to thicken it up, so we're going to take some water out of it, feed it to the digestor, store it for like three months. It's going to be in there forever, going to make a ton of gas, we're going to burn it off. Take it to here and then we're going to pump it back up to there. Eventually, hopefully, we'll go make compost out of it, but otherwise it'll be what we call a class B bio solids you could land a pipe. Got to that part of the process, we got to here and we said, gosh, there's not a lot that we can reuse in the design. Because we've kind of taken everything that's been done and we, we changed it. So there are elements of the design we've been able to use, so that um mechanical electrical building, the red one on the top. That building was, i- is very similar to a different structure that was designed, that was on the lower end of the plant downward. Big brown circle is, or the big green circle is the secondary clarifier. Um we were able to reuse that and a few other parts of the process. But that's been the complicated part is we really had, we, we took what was done and we had to take a big step back. Greg and I have gone over this time and again, have we made the right decisions? Did we make the right decisions? Did we do the right thing? I'm convinced this is the only thing we could have done, that um, you know, making a huge investment like that and getting through construction and then figuring out it's not what we need is a far bigger challenge than some engineering time. I realize that's a horrible thing for an engineer like me to say, but I, I really do think the decisions we made and the decisions the city staff made all along the way have been the right ones. Um and so let me talk about the future, because this is the key to what we did when we redesigned this facility. We think that this design, that the green facility um will get you what you need. So the, the, the answer to your question, Councilor Trask, is this facility is exactly what you need, it's simpler, it's easier to operate. Um it will be well-designed and I think it will last you the twenty years that has been committed in the entire design process. What we've done, and I think that one of the, the really impressive things that we've been able to do in the way we've redesigned it is, we've created space. So the, two more primary clarifiers can be added, that should last, take you out to fifty plus years on this facility. Another erosion basin will fit in here, again, that's, that's looking out long beyond this twenty year trajectory. Where this can ease, these two structures can easily added. Probably not in anyone in this room's lifetime will that secondary clarifier in the blue be needed, but there's space down there. There was some work that would have to be done in the lower plant entrance and some, some other things to figure out how to make it fit. But you've got this whole corner now that we've recovered, filters can be expanded this way really easily, and then you've got this whole um uh point, it's kind of the, the, the south end of the existing administration building, which could be for a future cogeneration system where you could make energy from the gas you produce off the digester. So we, we've done a pretty effective job of maximizing that space, which we also didn't necessarily see as much of that in the previous design, the way that things were laid out. So um all in all, I think the plan we set up is, is an effective one, I think we've economized the design, I think we've done the best we can down through the process. Um, oh yeah, pretty pictures before I go there, just because I figured we'd all be stressed at this point in the presentation. So um this is what building A looks like, um I've got a couple of different renderings. Um it is the, on the right side, you see the operations and administration or the operations center in the maintenance building. The pretty economized design, so this is an industrial building that you drive down and you see in every city that there is. Um it's metal siding and a metal roof and steel columns on the inside. It's about twenty-two foot tall on the operation side, there is a second story, that's where we have HVAC and there's a archive storage. That's being all framed out of uh, out of lumber. On the left side, that's the, what we call the process side, so that's the headworks, which is the screen. So you pump into the headworks, you take all the stuff that, you know, we talked about this before in past presentations, but that's the place where we take all the stuff that people flush out that we can't have go through the process and then solids de-watering is the last step on the solids process. And that's all at end plant. Um if you don't like yellow, that, that definitely threw me off when we first saw it, it grows on you, if you look at it for a while, it does, the yellow. Um this is another option that the architects came up with, but looks a lot bluer on this screen than it did on mine. That's not the color blue I thought it was. So uh phasing. This was the big driver, uh how do we spend the seven million dollars? So one thing we know we can do in a, in a, some amount of time is put concrete in the ground. We can still get concrete, generally, we can still get rebar if it's standard shapes and sizes. Um so what we tried to focus on was, let's try to maximize how much concrete we got to put in the ground. When we start to look at spending that, that much money early in a construction project or putting concrete in the ground pretty fast. So we built the phasing around new concrete, that means we put the primary clarifiers, which is the rectangle box um in phase one, all building A, because we figured, we probably, I don't know that we'll get that pre-engineered metal building here. But I think we'll get it ordered and into fabrication, so you can, you know, that's about half us usually is the negotiated price on those, once you get through some of those. So um maybe sixty percent, so should be able to, to spend a pretty big chunk of change to, to get that into um the, the delivery side of the organization, wherever it gets purchased. And down on the low end, so we've all reorganization of the lower side of the plant, the access road down. Um it's so all the light blue that wanders its way down, and then that's the new influence pump station. Um this portion of the facility in reality could more or less operate itself. Um this, this would be a, a major expansion that would, you know, if you had to limp along for some period of time. Um it wouldn't be just sitting out there unused, you could actually use it as part of the process. Um you could pump solids up to it and use the screw press in the, in building A, you could use the primaries. The primaries could feed the, the aerobic, or the erosion basin, you could use the primary or the secondary clarifiers you have right now. Um and, and so it was kind of designed with the ability to be a standalone phase, not with the intent that you wouldn't build phase two. But just to give us, if there needed to be some time or whatever between contract that we had these two phases that, that could be built a, a, almost independently of each other. The one challenge with phase one and phase two is it's a fairly small site. And the, the funding plan to go through USDA, they will not allow you to do what we call CMGC, so alternate delivery is not an option. Um that's all, on a project like this, that's always something that you'd like to see, is if we could go CMGC or a construction manager, general contractor, you partner with the contractor and you develop guaranteed maximum price contract, so you could just do two GMPs for this project with the same contractor, if you could do CMGC, USDA won't allow that, you have to hard, what we call hard bid or just bid the project. So we have to design it to a hundred percent, we put it on the street, we bid it competitively, you get a price, sign a contract, you go build it. To spend that seven million dollars by that date, there's just no way we were going to get through that whole part of the design and have any chance of spending that much money. So the only way that we could see to use the funding sources that we thought or, or confident you were going to use. Um and to, to meet this constraint, which has been driving us, was really, we've got to dive in right now, we got to go sort this sucker out. And we got to break it into phases so we can spend that money by that date. Um we've been less focused on phase two through the design, focus more on the interfaces between phase one and phase two. So we don't screw something up when we go to build the second phase. Um but we haven't spent a lot of time other than kind of sorting out the costs and, and, and getting equipment quotes and things like that on phase two, um mostly driving the team on phase one to get that out to do. We've, so we've got a really strong design team, and one of the things that, that's great about our team is we're all building stuff and in construction right now. So uh lots of examples of what I call continuous value engineering, so you know, you did a value engineering study, you got to a point of design, you have it studied. They gave you some ideas, you implement them. Um we've made that just part of what we do, every time we have a chance, we try to cut something out that we think's going to cost too much. Um so we've simplified the thing that contractors do when they build their concrete boxes, so we've taken out less pores. Um it should help reduce the cost of the concrete, even though we don't necessarily see it in the unit prices we use, contractors will cost that out. We should get better bids. Um the concrete's going to cost what it is, but we can make their insulation cheaper, that will be reflected in the design or in their bid. or in their bids. Um. On the electrical side, so typically we use what's called PVC coated rigid, um, steel conduit. It's almost impossible. In fact, I think the quote from the electrical engineer was, I don't even know if they could build the project if we put PVC rigid and we call it Rob Roy. Trade name is Rob Roy. I don't even know if the project, if we put properly on the field. Um, so we've switched to aluminum conduit, which doesn't sacrifice quality. And then we're using flex, a little bit higher quality flex than the flex you would put inside your house. You know, you go get the rolls um, at Home Depot, um, a little bit higher quality than that. Um, but that flex conduit can be used in a lot of places meets code. We don't typically use it in municipal facilities, but in this case, um, it will help with the cost. We did consolidate the four buildings. We've switched some of the buildings from CMU to, to lumber framing. Um, uh, that is, that has reduced the cost pretty significant for just those portions of the buildings. Um. We're trying to reuse as much as the lower plant roadways as we can. So we can just overlay those instead of just blowing up everything and kind of redoing the entire site. Um, that is challenging because there's a lot of work going on there, but, um, we have for the most part retained kind of the loop around the lower plant that's there. Um, we've done some work to, to try to reuse the existing influence pump station um, for a drain pump station at, uh, it won't, it doesn't require us to put as much capacity into the new influence pump station, um, which has saved a little bit of, of space. Um, and, and uh, uh, almost was a balance in terms of cost, this new larger secondary clarifier was better for operations and just, um, uh, demolishing the small secondary. So we'll continue to do that. We were on calls today talking about things that will hopefully simplify things and reduce costs. Um, that's just what we'll be doing between now and when we get to 90%. Um, cost. All right. Here's why we're here. Uh, I've been practicing these slides for three days. I'm going to, I'm going to butcher it, but I'm going to do my best. Um, so if you look at the, if you just look at the construction cost index, what you see is quite a bit of inflation, but it's nothing that would lead you to believe your projects double, you know, the cost has gone up double. Um, 11% construction cost index in, you know, the last 12 months is four to four and a half times normal. So that's a lot of inflation and that's a, a broad market index. So that's a leading indicator. Um. Some other things that we're seeing in the wastewater industry and the tieback to what Greg reported or talked about on the cost increases that all these other facilities are seeing, the doubling of construction costs from what engineers estimated. In times like these, I will tell you, engineers hate being low bid. We have a really hard time with the way that we do estimates, keeping up with inflation. We do everything we can that we don't track well, that contractors do. Um, they know about lead times. They know about the overhead costs associated with longer construction windows. They'll tie that into their bids. Um, they will pass on anticipated pricing to buyers. Um, the, the, uh, some of the specialty metals, so stainless steel, we put a ton of stainless steel in wastewater treatment plants, the screens, the headwork screens that you're putting in are 316 stainless. Um, 90% of the nickel that goes into stainless steel was produced in Russia. So that market is gone. That market is not accessible. So you've got the rest of the world fighting for this 10% of the, you know, the available nickel that goes into creating stainless steel. So raw materials pricing has just skyrocketed. Um, a couple of, uh, additional pieces to of information to talk through. The outpatient. The problem. Sorry. Okay. Uh. We did talk to, so, I mean, we're trying to keep up with things as much as we can. Uh, on the left side, that's a quote we just got. It was on a completely different project and just came in at, uh, it happened to come in earlier this, on Monday this week. But, um, just ductal iron pipe, which we put a lot of iron pipe facilities and treatment plants, um. Costs have increased 50% over the last 14 months. I think the thing to look for is, uh, the surcharges being added. We can't get commitments on how much pipe we can get. We can't get commitments on lead times. We can't, uh, on every piece of equipment contractors, when we ask for them for pricing, um, they will only give us approximate numbers. Um, nobody knows how to provide any sort of budget numbers and that is across the board. Um, and so what they do in that situation, what you do is you just give as high a number as you feel like you need to. And so we get these really, really high cost numbers and ridiculous lead times. So the new gen set, the standby generator that's got to go with the plant, it's probably going to be 1.5 megawatts, hopefully a little bit smaller, but it's in that range. Um. We, the nearest date we can get is 12 months lead time, one year. We think it's probably closer to 15 to 18 months because nobody just wants to tell us that number, but um, it might be that long before we can even just get a standby generator out to that facility. Um, on stainless steel side, uh, just the, the, the raw stainless steel price index has gone up 30% since last June, when we started looking at the project since last June, that cost has gone up 33%. That's the raw materials price. Fabrication, so we, we've got some inside information from some of our suppliers, our equipment suppliers. Um, the steel fab costs, taking into account that have gone up 50 to 60%. Um, all of that gets rolled back and then contractors take that number. They see the uncertainty and all the others, and then their numbers go up on everything else. So it's at this, it feels like the great, the start of the great recession. I remember when the economy crashed. Um, uh, right up to, leading up to that, we couldn't keep up with, it's the same exact, it feels like the same thing. We couldn't keep up back in 08. Prices were going up. Engineers will always look. Um. It's set to feel in Eastern Europe is challenging. I think it's driven it up even further, but I think that stress was already in the system. Um. So this is where we're at. Uh, I, I'm not going to sugar, sugarcoat it. Um, we, uh, we've been higher than this. We were a couple of million dollars higher. We've been able to beat that up. Uh, trying to find ways to save a little bit of money. Um, uh, but it's a, it's a, a lot more expensive than we thought it was all along. I do think the, what we started with would have been substantially more expensive than this number. Um, which is, which is not a great thing to say, but, um, it's the only way I've been able to reconcile how to inform you of that. I'm not, uh, I, I'm just the engineer. I can't build it. We have to have a contractor commit to it and hopefully there we'll be able to get some pencil sharpening, but that's where the number is for the whole project right now in terms of our opinion, the probable construction costs. Um, it's also going to take us some more work to get the design done. We just had to do too much to start over and build it back up. There's too many changes. Um, I wish the story was different. I wish the story was. But this is where we're at. Um. We're going to do everything we can in our power. If, if you'd like us to continue to get the project designed, get it out to bid. Hopefully we get some good news. There is some beating evidence that we maybe have peaked on the inflation curve. Um, you know, I don't know how you can tell because it's, it's rear-facing. Um, but if you believe the prognosticators, um, maybe it'll get better. I don't know if it's going to get better by the time we have to bid your project. And that's where we sit today. Uh, schedule wise, that's tough to read. Um, the blue is phase one, the green is phase two. The vertical red line now, expect you to read all of that. The, at the top is the design, the bottom is construction. Um. This line. Oscar Ratawak on variable. You can do and coordinate early submittal reviews. So as soon as we get a contract signed with a contractor, we push out submittals. We have the vendors signed up. They're already working on them. Um, as soon as we know the name manufacturers, we have them working on their submittals while we're sorting out the contracts. We do those reviews quickly. So we get those, those, we move those parts of the project from the marketing side into the fabrication and delivery side. Those are the people that do the work. So we need to get it into that side of organization. Um, and then will this deadline will be, uh, constrained in the contract. Well, for sure. And. Awesome message comes to a conclusion. Um. Can you take this slide? Yeah. Uh, I think we've had an open conversation with Greg and I know he's been talking to as many people in the city and with you all as he can. Um. Indicated that there's a, he marched forward, let's get it out, keep it going. Um. Uh. That's been our mantra is to just keep charging as fast as we can. Um, certainly we can adjust that if need be. Um, uh, we have submitted a proposal to finish phase one design and get that out on the street and to carry phase two to what we call 60%. I would like to be able to budget all of phase two design, but I just don't know enough about what is in that part of the plant site to be able to budget that through final. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll get smarter on that phase as we, as we progress, but we got to get that first phase out to bid and that's been our focus. Um. Plan is to bid phase one mid-July. And hopefully we're breaking ground in September, all those well. Pre-qualification, you want to hit that real quick? Oh yeah. So we will, um, uh, because of the two-phase construction, I really want to do a contractor pre-qualification. And I'd like to use the same list of pre-qualified contractors on both phases so that at least we have some common group of people that know and pursue the project potentially in the first phase. We invite that same group back for another whack at it when, to get to phase two. With any luck, we get this contract. It's not a big concern and everything worked out. If he's lobbying what it is, we probably end up with two contractors and we need to figure out how to get them to work together on the site. But I think having a list of pre-qualified contractors that we know we can work with through the bidding process, uh, for both phases will be hopeful. We'd like to get that going pretty quick. And that's all I have.
Questions, counselors?
Um, so when your plans are completed, how long are they good for? Say you pay for all the that you've done. After them and.
Yeah, I have a design for a new secondary clarifier in Corales. It's been sitting on the shelf for four years and it's still as good as it was. We finished the design.
Anyone else? No?
Sober.
Thank you, Preston. Next item, request for council action, proposal for additional engine services. Christie?
Well, we just gave you the presentation. We, um, on the last slide, you, it showed where we were needing to get in phase two to 60% uh, percent complete. And what was it, it was going to take. And that's what this task order in front of you is for. Um, uh, the, uh, what we put in the bottom was obviously to, we gave you some options, but um, we would hope that you would authorize, um, to execute this contract for services, engineering services with Wes Yost and get us through the phase one, final design and 60% base two.
So I need a motion. Sub move is recommended.
Second.
So it's been moved in seconded discussion. Julie, roll call please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Gerson?
Yes. So that the record show we have five yeses and two absent. On your way. Okay. Information only, the FAC managed outreach and community resource facility update. Christie, is this you or is this Blair?
Um, so it's been a little while since, uh, we've given you an update on how things are going with the, uh, proposed site with FAC. Um, took a little bit of time, but the county finalized the transfer of the property to FAC. They now own it. The city and FAC are now meeting once a week to coordinate development. Public work staff have begun clearing the site. It's actually mostly clear now. And, um, both on the FAC property and on the easement that we're, that we've given. Fencing is being installed along the south side of the easement, uh, that started last week and it's almost done. After that easement fencing is be, is finished, we'll be able to start with the infrastructure in the easement because we needed the fencing done first in order to, to keep the public work site secure. Um, and so the water line and the conduit for power and telecommunications, and then the gravel will go after that, go in after that fencing is done. Students at the high school are currently constructing components of the huts, which will later be assembled on site. Uh, after the site is graded, gravelled and fenced. And last week there was a tour, I believe, uh, Council Corley attended, so she could speak better as to, as to what, uh, was, she saw there. Um, and then finally there's a, FAC is working with a local contractor to schedule the transfer of the city hall annex building to the site and, um, they've walked the site and determined exactly where that building will go. Uh, we had to change the, the site plan slightly in order to take advantage of some of the areas that are already paved. Um, and once the, the, the easement area is clear so that they can get the building through, uh, they'll be able to get that uh, moved in. We don't have a firm date on scheduling though, because there will be some, some permits involved with moving that building.
Questions, counselors?
I don't have a question, but I would really like to applaud the youth of our high school for the excellent work that they're doing. You know, I've seen them over the years build chicken coops and things like that. They're always working on something and, and they're, they're wonderful, um, students and they learn a lot of things about construction through those projects. But the idea of them being able to create something that someone can live in and replicate that, I, it's just amazing. And I think that there's life lessons in this process. Those little, um, Conestoga huts aren't luxurious in any way, but it's really, um, I think it's inspiring. And then they're storing them. They have all these pieces all stored up and sorted out and, um, I, I'm really grateful for them to have that opportunity and to participate and that pride in what they're doing and that this is moving forward so quickly. Um. To, to, to change lives and to change what's happening in the face of Sweetland. And so this is very exciting.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Blair, you said there was permits that we need to get for moving the annex?
That will, the, the contractor who will be doing the moving will need to have those permits and that's for transporting the building itself. Cause it, it's going to have to cross an ODOT controlled highway, uh, in order to get it there. And then there are permits involved with placing a manufactured building on a site and that'll be through our permit office. So the, the contractor will be applying for that, but our staff will be assisting.
So we have to get, make them get permits? Is that something that's a law? Um, we can't, we, we couldn't waive those?
So the fees we can, we can, we have a little bit of wiggle room on the fees, but the, the requirements of a permit is not something that we that I would even recommend thinking about waving, uh, because we, we do want to, uh, we, we need to make sure that we apply the same rules to ourselves and to FAC that we apply to anyone else.
Right. Good.
Anything, any other comments?
Well, I, I'm, so the, the permits are biased for us, right?
Not exactly. Uh, they, we are involved certainly, but, um, FAC, we are donating the building. They, we are involved certainly, but FAC, we are donating the building to FAC and FAC is hiring someone to move that structure. So typically the contractor is the one that applies for permits when you have some work done. And so given that we're not directly involved in the work required to move that structure, it would not be appropriate for us to be the applicant. But we are, for the building permits, we are the reviewing authority. So they would go through our office.
Thank you for that clarification.
ODOT however is a, you know, that's a different story. We'll support those as much as we can and expedite it through as, but as best we can.
Thank you.
Anything else? So Kristi, I wonder if this would be another opportunity to say thank you to a group of students once this is, this project is complete?
Will do. We'll get it on the list. Thank.
I would, along those lines, I would also suggest that once development is complete and those huts are on site, a field trip is in order to, to check out the site and, and take some pictures. And, and I think inviting the students to that event would be wonderful way to extend that. Thank you.
Do that.
Okay. New business. Presentation of a business promotional video produced by Rain. Kristi?
Well, I'm going to give you just a brief introduction because I think Blair is too modest to talk about the great work that he has done, but he has partnered with Oregon Rain and on a business promotion video and we're going to be sharing you with that with you this evening. And I'll let Blair talk about a little bit of the background.
So as you know, we have a relationship with Oregon Rain for supporting entrepreneurs. When the pandemic first hit, they suddenly were not able to provide the direct in-person support that they had been providing previously. And so they were trying to find ways to utilize their resources to benefit the communities that they are working with. One of the things that they arrived at was creating promotional videos for each of the communities that they work with and using those to encourage businesses to both partner with them, but just encourage entrepreneurship in general and help people realize the opportunities that you have in our community to, to start a business and to, to help that business to thrive and talk about the support that the community can provide for that. And so the, this video is, is the one for Sweet Home that came out of that effort.
Sweet Home is. Sweet Home is, as you can see, an absolutely gorgeous place and it's the.
It is on our YouTube channel. Yes. And just for your information, I'm not starring in this video. This is just, they interviewed several people community. I was one of them. It was. It's not, not my decision.
Would you like to table that?
Yes.
Hey, we can do that. Okay. Moving on. Information only, council goals. Kristi?
And our staff has graciously prepared an update to all of those goals beginning on page 74 of your packet. And this is just your opportunity to ask if any questions with regard to the status of those goals and just to give you information on where we are. We don't plan to do a major goal setting session until the new city manager arrives and that would likely take place at the beginning of next year, but we wanted to let you know what progress has been made on the goals that you established last year. There's still a number of things in progress and we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, counselors?
My God.
That was the comment. That's all I had.
Looks to me like a lot of work has been done. So I appreciate the update.
Yes, I'll let Legia Moll answer that. So you would be a come on up because of you are working on that project.
I wasn't anticipating answering this one. So what we've done really is the branding, we really haven't launched that because that would really be an outside thing. So we haven't hit that one as hard. Cause that would be a major investment to get a brand redone. But having positive information put out, upping what we put out as a city, as far as the different departments, having high quality brochures for new city managers, that's one of them, but doing high quality work and consistent information and then building our connections with other communities. So they know that we're out here and that we are, that we are doing good work in Sweet Home and we're changing the mindset of what people are doing. So that is one of the big things. So it's a, it's a long process to do. So that's what we're, that's what my part of it is doing. So that's what, as a city, we're, we're plugging away at that.
Any other questions? Yes.
Well, I had noticed that the logo had more green on it and less purple in colors than before. And that's, that had occurred some time ago and we'd never talked about that. And so I thought that was kind of interesting. But speaking of branding, I really do believe we have an opportunity with our youth building these Conestoga huts and they're groundbreaking to go ahead and do a video promoting what we're doing with the sleep center. Because if we have something that other communities could emulate and Sweet Home took the lead in it, that would be not telling them how to do it, but this is a template. I think that would be a really good promotional for them to look at and to move forward with. And it's an opportunity for us to say, we were out in the front on this, you know? So I think that's an opportunity we need to really seriously look at.
I'll just say that this staff has totally impressed me since I've been here with the quality of the publications that they're putting out. The quality of our projects and the, the presence in the community is just amazing. And I really want to commend them for all of their work as they're top notch and anyone would be proud to have them on their staff. And I certainly am proud that they're, to work with them.
Anyone else? Hey, thank you, Kristi. Okay. Our request for council action. Authorization to fill two vacant positions, I believe, right? Kristi?
I guess you have an amended staff report on your agenda this evening, beginning on page 79. We're requesting to fill two vacant positions that we have upcoming. One, the resignation of our treatment plant operator who will be moving outside of our community in June. And so we would like the people to fill that vacancy. As well as the resignation of our seasonable, our seasonal municipal maintenance worker who had, who was selected to participate in the electrician's training program. So congratulations to him. But that does leave us with a vacancy in the seasonal temporary employee position. So we're requesting your approval to fill those two positions.
So I need a motion. So moved is recommended. So it's been moved in seconded discussion.
I, I just got a comment. It's a shame that we're losing the fellow, the Mr. Goble that's going up to Washington for the right reasons. But I think he was headed in the right direction for us. So.
We tried to head it off, but he, he did, he's doing a really good job for us and he's doing everything right. And we have a vacancy and he gets the cert. We, we told him to come back. So.
Roll call please, Julie.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
President Protim Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Sorry. Request for council action number, resolution number 13 for 2022. Grant application to Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for a parks master plan update.
Okay. So one of the goals that we just covered was, is to help awareness of our infrastructure needs, including parks and build community awareness of those things. One of the things that we're finding to be a barrier is our parks master plan doesn't have sufficient detail to be very helpful. It doesn't have standards for how far a resident should have to walk to get to a park. It doesn't have standard amenities that each park should be expect, expected to have. And, and so it, and it needs some fleshing out. One of the things we've been trying to do the last couple of years is to, to have a, an update to our parks master plan. We, for basically budgetary reasons, we've been unsuccessful in, in, in doing that so far. The Oregon Parks and Recreation Department has a grant program for local governments. And we have been the recipient of grants for the Sankey Park upgrades. But they also have, and those are for, for actual construction improvements, but they also have planning grants, which are a different pot of money and a different, they're actually easier to get than the, than the construction grants. So this is, we would like to apply for a, a grant to, to get this work done. There is a 40% match that we would be expected to provide. And so because of, of that commitment, the application requires that we provide a resolution that's passed by the council that supports the application. Essentially says, if we receive this grant, then we will provide our, our fair share. So if, if I can answer any questions, let me know. But that's what this is about.
So I need a motion first, please. So moved. So it's been moved in seconded discussion. Actually, I do have a question. So what would 40% be approximately?
That depends on the overall cost of the project. A, we expect it would cost between 30 and 45,000 for the overall project. So 40% would be between 12 and 18,000.
And would that come out of the parks budget?
It would be, we would be looking for, Brandon would be bitter to be able to answer that, but it's essentially same way, same methods we have for parks funding now. General fund.
Other questions?
I, I am in favor of doing this. I have expressed concern before because we've talked about the cost of draining water off Strawberry Park. And yet if we use naturalized vegetation and made, did a butterfly park focus or something that we could use that natural landscape and environment to our good in creating a park that has a unique personality or so many people in town have dogs. And dog parks aren't a piece of our plan. And why isn't it? It's not serving our community the way it should. And I think it's time that we really take a good look at parks having a personality that match our community and think smarter, not harder. So.
Madam Chairman, if I could, I'm on that committee with those and those guys, those gals and the, the folks that are on that parks committee are really doing a really good job and and I think it's a pretty small amount of money compared to just beating ourselves to death, going over and over and over and over again. And anyone that hasn't looked at Sankey Park needs to look at Sankey Park. And the other things that the public works are doing, we just did a tree thing, but Evergreen and it really looks good. And so there's stuff getting done and it costs money. We know that. I, I'm a hundred percent sure this should be done too. It may seem like a lot of money, but you know, when it's available for this point and we don't know, we, we don't know what's going to happen next year. We just don't. And so I'm, I'm all for this.
Any other questions?
I needed to acknowledge Dave's sentiments about the people on that committee have worked for years to further the interests of our community and they have done a good job. They've been dedicated and hardworking and I think this is gives them the tools that they need. So.
Full disclosure, I didn't want to be on the parks board.
Oh yeah. Right. Right. Whatever.
No, that's truth. I'm serious. But they, they've done a good job and I, I enjoy being there and they, they and I tell you what, the, the boy, this guy, these all do the good job, but it all comes down, and I hate to say this over and over and over again necessarily, but the parks people and the public works that runs getting this done. And they're working their tails off to get it done. And they're really doing a good job. So they need to be, and Greg won't tell them. So I'll go down tomorrow. But anyway, he does a good job too. It's really good.
Julie, roll call please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Protim Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
That the record show there are five yeses and two absentees.
No, unfortunately I think the connection's too unstable to actually play said video and actually have it line up. So.
There he is.
We could make an attempt at it. I can't promise that it's going to come across the right way, although it seems to be keeping up right now. So we'll, we'll give it a try, I guess, if the council would like.
Sweet Home is, as you can see, an absolutely gorgeous place. And it's the, basically the last town on the road to Bend from the Willamette Valley. It's, it's just on the edge of everything, but we're actually remarkably close to everything. Two hours from Bend, two hours from Portland. Hour and a half, hour 45 to the coast, you know, so you can get anywhere you really need to be. But you've got this and the national forest is right here. We've got two lakes. This is. We've got two lakes. This is Foster Lake. Green Peter is upriver. And it's just a gorgeous place to be and spend time.
I don't know that there's a better place to start a business than Sweet Home. We have a really strong tourism draw with the lakes being nearby. And plus that strong community support, everybody rallies together and wants to lift each other up and, and see you succeed.
I don't think there's a time I drive through town without seeing somebody I know, which is, to me, it's a big benefit of having a business in a small town.
Really appreciate the support we've had in our first year. It was much more successful than we had anticipated. And we're going into two thousand twenty-two much stronger than we, we thought we would be.
If it wouldn't have probably been for the Oregon Jamboree, I don't know if we would have ever sold by the cup. But that was an opportunity that we were approached with. I knew Robert on a personal level and he's like, what do you think? And I'm like, okay, let's try it. And it actually turned out to be very much in the positive for us.
Other small business, like the separate club, Angela Tech Food Services, where we're set up now. She's opened her parking lot to us, you know, anytime we want to serve. She doesn't have a liquor license. Sweet Hawaiian did the same thing. You know, they own their lot. You guys are welcome to set up there. So other businesses definitely helping get our exposure out there.
I think there's so much that happens in a small town that's just becomes like a family. Your friends become family. I mean, your, your coworkers become family. Co-businesses become family together. You're always there to support each other. You're always there to look out for each other. You want to see everybody do good.
And, and I just, I love that we can do that. And, and I think the company here has an opportunity to, to take good people, as, as Steve Jobs would say, and make them into great people.
I would say Oregon Rain has brought some excitement to the community as far as entrepreneurship goes, because they've brought a lot of events and resources that weren't here before.
Not only do they coach entrepreneurs, but they're also coaching the city in creating an entrepreneurial environment so that we are as friendly as we can be to startups. We understand what it's like to be just getting off on, on your feet and, and becoming more independent. And so we want to help you along with that and provide that coaching. When I go out and look at some of the city property that we have planned to be the new home of the jamboree, I am just awestruck by how amazing that property is. It's got ponds, it's got the river right next to it, beautiful trees. I think there's even a bald eagle nest. It's just amazing. And to picture that venue being developed and to picture the corridor going into that property that's going to be filled with commercial businesses responding to that event and to that traffic that would be coming through. It really gets me excited and it's, it's just fun to think about. It's fun to visualize what it's going to be. And it's going to be amazing. And we want everybody to come along.
Yep.
Thank you. I want to give some credit to our partners. The Rural Economic, Rural Economic Alliance is what we have rebranded the, the group of eight cities that we are participating with. And that's a part of a recent branding effort to, to get that. So when you say, see real Oregon, that's, that's us. That's the Rural Economic Alliance. It's Lebanon, Brownsville, us, Monroe, Philomath, all of us, my thing.
Harrisburg.
Yeah. So there, we're all really excited to be, each of those cities had their own video from the same process. And we're excited to be working together and there's, there's great things happening.
Thank you. Request for council action, approval of grant agreement for ARPA funds. Brendan, I suppose this is you.
That is me. So before you is a request to review and approve or allow, sorry, let me try this again. A request to allow the city manager Protem to sign a, an agreement with the state of Oregon to receive five hundred thousand dollars in additional ARPA funds. Those funds are specifically slated for the construction of a pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Twenty Second Avenue and Main Street. I will apologize to ODOT and the state of Oregon is apparently we received this in February. And with all of the ARPA emails going out about reminding us to file our periodic report, it got missed. So this is before you now so that we can collect those funds, distribute them to ODOT so that they can keep going on that pedestrian crossing that the council has, has expressed a high interest in.
Need a motion? So it's been moved in seconded, discussion? I don't think there's much discussion on that twenty-two. Roll call, Julie, please.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
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 At the record show, we have five yeses and two absentees. Okay.
I just added, like, Sanchez for work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Request for council action, occupational skills training program with Chumecata Community College. Greg, is that you?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Stephen come up. He knows, he little intimate with this prop. He's in his fourth position with, I guess, the company he worked with prior. And he's been reached out a couple of different times from this program and I'll let him get you up to speed and what's going on.
Questions, Counselor?
Stephen, so it, it is for trying to get people to work in the public work side of it? Or just any job that they were like electricians or is that what I understood?
It could be used for anything.
Yeah. Yes. It's a good idea. Chumecata is good school. It's rural paramedics school.
I actually went through this.
Anyone else? Questions? Do I need a motion?
So moved.
So it's been moved in second. Did any discussion further? Roll call, please, Julie.
Counsel Gorley?
Aye.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Aye.
Isn't it Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
At the record show, we have five yeses and two absentees. Yes. Will you keep us up to date on that? Thank you. Okay, request for council action, proposal to rename city wastewater treatment plant.
I have an RCA in front of you. We've been talking a lot about the wastewater project tonight. Because of the significant changes, we've been wanting to put a, a new modern name on this. And us as a team have been kicking around the idea of what some of that may look like. The article that I provided with you was one of the reasons that every time we go into that wastewater plant, we see the Mahler name on that plaque and it's not our mayor, current mayor, but it's his father. He was instrumental in the last design of that. Also as staff that, when I first got here, the push that I saw from Mayor Mahler was to do what we could do to get this plant done. See that his push on infrastructure, we would kind of like to see and have that name kind of put into our new current name of the plant, some form or fashion. So we have an RCA here as to make it a formal process, seek approval for that. I think we're asking that we let the family select the name and there were some options that were provided. We'll leave it up to discussion, but that's kind of what we're seeking is to seek finding a modern name for the, our new updated wastewater plant.
Any questions? Are you, need a motion?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where, where the options, can you help me?
Yeah, and I don't see the email that had, and we'll have to probably bring those back one, it was a long list.
One other quick question. Was like, is there any input from the public about any names that they thought might be?
I don't, we haven't reached out to the public. Traditionally, I've been doing this for thirty-six years, working in water and wastewater and all the different agencies that I've worked build of great wastewater plants, water treatment plants, different types of processes. And what happens is usually you'll see, because there's so many, someone agency just doesn't have one, we'll call it Sweet Home. Let's say we had to, you have to seek out different names. So what I've seen over my career is that they'll find a name that somebody is prominent, usually for maybe that agency or the community, somebody that was instrumental. And so this is an example, probably from the lens that I sit from, that I feel it would beat that forty-year span of, of that wastewater.
I know usually when things are named after someone, they either donated a ton of money to it, like ten million dollars or they dead.
Counsel Gorley, did you have a comment?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So. So I need a motion?
Come on.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Julie, roll call, please.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez? Counsel Richards?
Now.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes. At the record show, it's vote was three to two in favor of bringing it up to the Mahlers. Okay, we have no ordinance bills. Reports of committees. I have a report from the chamber. They're working on Sportsman's Holiday and they will be giving their oral report, quarterly report to the council next meeting. As well as introducing the princesses for Sportsman's Holiday.
Yeah, I can at least say that the Arbor Day thing was very successful, most that they've seen.
Anyone else? Mayor's report. Well, this is a President Protem report. So I've asked Legia to put together a, or Blair or someone, oh, there we are. Some pictures of the empty commercial buildings in town. My reason for doing so is to emphasize the situation in which we find ourselves. The past five years, we've dangled the carrot to try and entice landlords to upgrade their buildings and ready them for occupancy. This has been successful for those buildings occupied, but not so much for the vacant ones. Last year, we passed an ordinance that says buildings need to be clean and presentable on the outside. Code enforcement has worked on this all year, but the number of vacant buildings has barely changed. We thought this would be a stick, but it's really just a twig. So I want to propose that the council and staff look to a bigger stick and impose a non-use fee on buildings that have been vacant for over two years. My inclination is to go big, so it is more profitable to have the building occupied than it is to leave it fit to it, than it is to leave it empty. I realize some of the facilities may not be fit to occupy, but this should not come in play with this fee. The property is the responsibility of the owner. The particulars as to the size of the fee, the timelines, the rescinding of the fee, et cetera, can be worked out. I do propose that any funds, if we do this, that are raised, be added to the economic development area to continue helping those who want to improve the community. In order for this to move forward for further discussion and further evaluation, I'm, I'm making this as a motion and it will need a second to bring it to the next agenda. Questions? Blair, did you want to talk a little bit about that in terms of other communities?
Um. I've done a little bit of research on this and for some communities, this, this is a continuing problem. And it's not an easy thing to solve because anything that involves private property and involves regulation, you have to look out for unintended consequences. And you have to look out for what's really going to satisfy the, the goals of the program. So I would, I, in the research that I've done, there's a variety of things that different cities have done. Some are effective, some are not, but most of them depend on what the overall goal. If your goal is simply information and, and with the ordinance that we have, that was one of the goals of mine, was just to get information about property owners. That can be accomplished without any fee at all and, and no, no punitive measures. If the goal is to just cover the costs of, of registering properties, then a minimal fee would do it. But if the goal is punitive, then obviously a large fee could, could meet that need. But also if the goal is, you know, some kind of change, then you need to make sure that it, that it fits in a way that would work. And so having waivers in place for properties that are actually doing what you want them to do, like list the property for sale, have an active building permit for improvements, that kind of thing. You'd want to make sure that your ordinance was tailored to that. And some cities have put measures like that in place. But it's, I don't know that there's a silver bullet out there, but it is a, a tool that the city should look into if that's of concern.
So my goal is not punitive, but for change, that's what I really want. And I've talked to several business owners who have businesses in town. They like the idea because they think the empty buildings are actually detrimental to their business.
Blair, did you have any? Do you have any numbers that those cities were charging? I mean, how did they determine what the charge should be or?
Yeah, so my, my, first of all, my research has not, has not been exhaustive. But in what I've come across, they range from as little as fifty dollars a year to significantly more than that. There, there were some that were, the most of them seemed to be in the range of five hundred two or so a year. Now, there was one city that stuck out quite a bit. They had an escalating amount where the longer it was derelict or vacant, the higher the fee went. And so if a property, it, it, I think it tapped out it. For a property that was vacant more than ten years, it was like five thousand dollars a year for that property.
Question, Robert, are we on people down there?
You're just gonna have to tailor it and look what everybody else is doing and see what they, they, they've come up with for that. But there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of hurdles that you're gonna have to fork because some of those buildings that were up there aren't unoccupied. I know one of them is a storage building. So what are you gonna do about that? I mean, those are the problems that you're going to have to face and overcome on how you define stuff and what people can do and can't do. And you might, you know, if it's the, if it's the facade, it may be a slightly different angle at it, I would think, than you have more. you have more regulations that deal with the, with just how the building looks as a facade. Your example, our close example, of course, is Sisters. You know, they've got regulations on how the building is supposed to look outside.
I would be interested in that as an alternative.
So, Madam Mayor, if I just may, to me, this sounds like a homeowners association for businesses in town and government having over regulation for private property. And I'm just not a fan of that. I know that we have an issue on our main street that's driving business away too. And so we're in a really tricky situation, but I just don't know how we would be able to pay for the cost of enforcement and then trying to get people to pay for upgrades or fines or whatever. To me, it seems like they don't really even have the money maybe to upgrade that thing to do, which is maybe less than likely.
And the area also. I wrote, how would you enforce this exactly anyways? That's my question is because as Robert said, I know some of those buildings are storage buildings and I have some of the people that own those buildings. And I don't really, I think all it's going to do is off it.
So I would be interested in looking at a couple of models. Because we have businesses that were designed to be retail sales on Main Street that aren't necessarily being used as retail sales and storage facilities or storage facilities. And we have a economic development funds to help these people make their businesses look pleasant. And it is not contingent on what kind of business they have. And so those resources are in fact available. I do believe that, just like we said earlier, we're accountable for that as well. I'm upset on that. But I think that I would very, be very interested in entertaining, looking at what some other communities are doing because we're having this conversation now. By the time we would put anything into order, if we chose to do something, they would have time to reevaluate and fix, get their acts together, to change it. Just like we had talked about having economic development funds available for businesses. And that's a personal property, but making that available for people because it's in the best interest of our community. It is in the best interest of our community to hold bad players accountable for their actions. We owe that to all of the citizens, not just the individual business owners who are not using their properties in a way that are in the best interest of the community. That's all.
Madam Mayor, I agree. I'd like to have more data on this. But I guess the other thing is, what are the options? What are our options? How are we going to get to a point that we don't do something? And I don't know that this is, I don't know that this is the right one, but I'd sure like to research that and get more information that would help us make a decision. Because it obviously is nothing happening now. There are ones that are not being done, or done anything with. It appears like they're going to, they won't even paint the buildings or whatever the circumstances are. I think that we, and I suppose if we've got it to a big amount of money, you'd go and lean on their property, I guess. Would that be the true, Robert?
Microphone.
That's always one of the options that you explore, you know, as part of it for.
Well, I think, I just like to see some more of the vote. So, help us all get through this.
Yes, of course.
You're half right. There is a, there is a basic amount, $5,000 that you can get without any match at all. And so anything over 5,000 is typically, depends on the improvement that you're doing, but typically 50% match. One thing I need to add, it was mentioned, some buildings used as storage buildings that weren't designed as for that purpose. We actually can do a better job, existing staff with existing codes can do a better job of enforcing because in the downtown, in the central commercial zone, a storage facility is not a permitted use. It may be conditional use, but if there's a property being used as a storage facility and it doesn't have a conditional use permit for that use, and it was not originally designed for that purpose, that is technically a code violation. And that's something that we can move forward on. It does get dicey because of how long the problem has been going on. But it's still a violation. Anything to the exterior?
We even broke that down into smaller increments so that they, if they only needed 1,500, they could get the 1,500 and then come back. Wasn't it up to 5,000?
Oh, yeah.
And then, yeah. So they didn't have to take all 5,000. They could ask for enough to paint their building and then come back later and do the windows or something.
I appreciate that. And I didn't realize. Thought it was very going to be a stretch, then coming up with the matching funds is.
So I guess my question is, is it, does any, if anyone wants further information on this and we want it on the need a second to my motion? Second. Please step, and it needs to be brought to the next agenda. Thank you. Kristi, city manager's report.
Thank you. Just a few items tonight. Wanted to let you know that we are in the process of approving the rate permit for the sportsman's holiday event. It will require us to close sections of Long Street and Main Street. We'll be signing off on that tomorrow. Which in place. Also during the sportsman's holiday event, there's going to be a fireworks show that will be held in the quarry area. Working with the fire district on that event. The chamber is working on facilitating the park. Forward to that later this summer. Also, we received notification from ODOT that due to the inclement weather, they're delaying the foreclosure of Highway 20. And they will be extending that to sometime after Labor Day. So more information to follow out of it. The, another thing that we talked about at the budget committee meeting was the use of our economic development fund, which was previously formed through the economic development development grant funds. And so I had staff look into the history of that. And Julie was able to find some information that was presented to the budget committee back in 2017. It was initially discussed on May 18. Finance director came back on May 22 with a report to the budget committee that the economic development funds could be used for, or that the CDBG funds could be used for economic development purposes. That's the information that we've found so far to date. We'll continue to look for more history on that. So I want to assure you that based on the information we have available to us, that those prior CDBG funds can be used for economic based on the history that we were able to find so far. And then finally, just wanted to let you know that Blair has been working for months with the planning commission on development code updates. In reviewing our charter, we will need to read the ordinance in full during one day. And so I'm going to pass the discussion over to Blair to review with you some options that we have.
Have fun, Blair.
A top 10 of those development code update.
All right. So there are some options. So just a little context, I've got a full binder of this new developed code that would need to be read. That's, that's a requirement of the charter and the charter also says that it has, that you have to do, if you're passing an ordinance, it has to be read on one day. And so that would be a rather long meeting. So however, we can split up the, the code into chunks and pass each as a separate ordinance. And we would just have the effective date of those ordinances coordinated so that they all became effective on the same day. So your options are, we can do it all in one big chunk. And I did some estimates of how long it would take. If we have the computer read it at two times speed, and this, my estimate was, it could be, it's intentionally, I tried to overestimate if I could because I'd rather give you a bigger number than a smaller one and then be wrong. So at two times speed, it would take about six and a half hours for the computer to read the whole thing. So we could do it all at once, just rip off the Band-Aid, have a six and a half hour meeting, make sure we have a quorum and do it. The other option is we could divide it into pieces. Right now, the drafter of our code drafted it in four articles. And so it's already divided into four pieces. They aren't all the same size. And so Article one would take 54 minutes to read at two times speed. Article two would be about, about two hours to read at two times speed. Article three is two hours, 15 minutes, and then Article four is about an hour and a half. Their charter does not say anything about the press being present.
Yeah. So.
The charter just says you have to, basically you just have to have a quorum and it has to be a public meeting. And so whether anybody shows up besides a quorum is entirely dependent on those people. I'm assuming that I would be present. As for other staff members, I don't know that you have to have any other staff members present.
So we could technically have a potluck and have a peonacle competition going on at the same time.
I think that would be a don't ask, don't tell situation.
Not if it's a public meeting, I don't think.
I mean, I don't see anything wrong with having food during your six and a half hour long meeting. And of course, you can, you can recess to take care of other needs.
Well, having, having listened to those things for a long time, it's not much fun. We should definitely break that up.
I would hate to go.
Yes.
You want to do that multiple times, hours at a time?
We could like rotate people. So like sometimes we would all have to be here.
Oh.
So he, he just volunteered to be here every time. That's what I heard. What did you hear?
That was you. You can, you have to have a quorum for each one, but you can't change in the middle of a meeting, right? So if you have a, if you have, if you choose to do all at once, six and a half hour long meeting, whoever the quorum is, has to, would have to be there the entire time. You can't swap in people and swap out people. And the same thing with each individual meeting.
I think the mayor can appoint them, can't he?
He.
Yeah, I'm really thinking that the current mayor, mayor pro temp and past pro temp, we got it covered by.
She's out of order.
So it's. Essentially, the timing of this is we're planning on, the planning commission would be done with their public hearing sometime in June. And so we would envision this being July or August, depending on how many meetings you want to spread it across.
So.
I'm okay with doing it whichever way. If we're going to do six hours, let's do it and get it over with. I don't care.
I'm okay as long as I can have my cell phone and some electronics going. Okay. So wait. So let's have a consensus.
Public hearing, but keep in mind also, yeah, because this is a land use this decision, there is a public hearing associated with it. However, the public hearing is separate from passing the ordinance. So you could have the public hearing at a regular meeting that doesn't last forever and then actually read the ordinance at a separate meeting.
So at the public hearing, the ordinance doesn't have to be read?
No.
Oh.
But to pass the ordinance, it has to be, it has to be read at a public meeting.
Right, but I mean.
Not necessarily a public hearing.
Okay. Okay. So Counselor Gorley, what's your take? I think we should do this in a regular meeting and not necessarily have to worry about broadcasting it, but invite the public to attend if they'd like to. And.
I'm sure they'll be.
Do you want to do it all in one? All in one, all in one, just get it done.
Yeah, I'd just rather do it all. Let's just get it one and done.
I will.
I'm okay with that, too.
I will not. There you are. I'm going to be super nice. I'm going to have my phone out. I'm naughty. Consensus is that we do it all at once.
Thank you for your input and I'll get back to you on a more firm date.
I'll be here, Dave.
Department. Department directors' report. Moving on, questions? Does anyone have any questions of the department directors? Either one want to say anything?
I would only like to take a moment to apologize to the council and to the community for our technical issues this evening. We will work them out so that it is not disruptive in future meetings, but I do apologize for that.
Madam Mayor, I spent five hours in hospital and he got better. I don't want to get him. I mean, I didn't say that. But anyway, he's much better. Greg's feeling hard thinking about him, but just thought maybe we want.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Counselor Business for the Good of the Order?
Angela owes me an ice cream cone. Yeah.
Julie, thank you for the goodies tonight. Appreciate that very much. Okay, if not, it's adjourned.